Afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us for the swearing in ceremony for Mr. Jason Inge. Mr. Inge, you may go to the podium, but also we'd ask our chair to come forward to give some brief remarks before calling Mr. Schaefer forward.
Thank you, and welcome, everybody, today to the swearing in of Mr. Jason Inge, whose name I still have a work in progress for me to say correctly. We're happy to have you here, and I'm going to keep it short and sweet. Let's get this man sworn in. Mr. Schaefer?
Okay, well, let's make this official. All right. Jason, would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear or affirm
I do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and that I will faithfully and impartially
I will faithfully and impartially
discharge and perform
discharge and perform
all the duties incumbent upon me
all the duties incumbent upon me
as a school board member of the school board of the city of Norfolk
as a school board member of the school board of the city of Norfolk.
Very good. For a term beginning February 5th, 2025
for a term starting on February the 5th, 2025
and expiring as soon after
expiring soon after
the November 5th, 2025 special election
the November 5th, 2025 special election
as the newly elected candidate
as a newly elected candidate
may be sworn in
as a new, may be sworn in
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my abilities
so help me God
so help me God.
He passed the test.
Congratulations.
Let me just sign this. Wait, no, you're all right. I need you to sign here, Jason, and then here, okay? Sign there and there, then I'll sign that you signed.
Awesome, sounds good. Let's get a John Hancock. The first signature towards a new era.
And one there.
All right.
Okay. Excellent.
George, thank you so much for your service in the city, and thank you for coming. Happy to do it. Thank you.
I'll give these to Colin.
All right.
And you can have some brief remarks?
Oh, yes, I do. I love, I got my cheerleaders here on the side. I tell you, I would need you, my board. So, all right. So first off, good afternoon, board members, educators, staff, family, members of the Norfolk community. It is an incredible honor to be, stand before you today, ready to serve the city of Norfolk. Taking this oath is more than a ceremony. It is a commitment, a commitment to lead with purpose, serve with integrity, and work relentlessly for the future of our students, of our great city. Leadership is not about titles. It's about action, accountability, and delivering results. It's about rolling up our sleeves, working together to ensure that every student in every classroom has access to the opportunities they deserve. Education is a civil right. Because when our schools succeed, Norfolk succeeds. Norfolk Public Schools has a strong foundation thanks to our dedicated teachers, support staff, families, and community partners. It is a foundation we can be proud of, but we cannot stop here, ladies and gentlemen. We cannot stop. We must build on it and push forward, raising graduation rates, strengthening early childhood education, and modernizing our facilities. These are just the starting point of our mission, and our mission is very clear: turn potential into progress. It is time for courageous conversations because our challenges are real. Reading scores are failing, achievement gaps are persistent, and enrollment in our school district is declining. But we face these challenges head-on, not with excuses, but solutions. We will lead with transparency. Let me repeat that again. We will lead with transparency, make data-driven decisions, stay laser-focused on student success. Together, we will create a culture of accountability, because accountability is not just a goal, it is a promise to the families and the children who trust us to get this right. This is a defining moment for the city of Norfolk, for the Norfolk School Board. The work ahead won't be easy, ladies and gentlemen. Let me say that again. The work ahead will not be easy, but we will be able to accomplish it. Progress will not come overnight, but together with trust, determination, and a relentless focus on results, we will get the job done. Let's be very clear: no more exceptions, no more excuses. Every child, every classroom, every opportunity. I'm ready to serve this great city, support my board colleagues, I'm ready to get to work, y'all, and I'm ready to build with all of you, all of you. It takes a village, this is a coalition, and we're ready to see our students rise to their fullest potential and ensure that Norfolk and its students are a thriving cornerstone of a diverse and thriving community. Thank you for this opportunity.
Let's get to work.
Thank you, Jason. I think I know who the orator on the board is after today. Again, thank you, everyone, for coming. We have a reception in the hallway, so let's go get something to eat. Thank you.
All right, awesome.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. We will go straight into our budget workshop. Oh, we have to do the roll call. I'm sorry, I don't have the agenda sitting in front of me, so.
I got distracted.
Here.
Buffalo?
Here.
Inge?
Here.
Martin?
Aye.
Walton?
Aye.
Present.
So, good afternoon, Chair de Calagero.
I do not like the way you are handling any of these issues. Sorry.
A little entertainment before the meeting. Again, good afternoon, Chair de Calagero, Vice Chair Ms. Thomas, members of the board and our community and staff. As you recall, in February, I did a presentation of my proposed operating budget for fiscal year '25-'26, and today, we feel that we're well-positioned to answer any questions that you may have related to this budget proposal. So at this time, I'll ask Chief Finance Officer Cheryl Spivey to approach the podium. She's going to certainly support this presentation, as well as our dynamic Executive Director of Budget and Grants Management, Crystal Skinner. Ms. Spivey?
Good afternoon, Chair de Calagero, Vice Chair Thomas, members of the school board, Dr. Birdsong. I'm pleased to provide a quick overview of the superintendent's proposed operating budget and a quick process of, you know, the things we've done so far and the steps we have left to get this budget adopted. And the presentation you have before you is the full presentation. I'm only going to talk to a few of these slides. The budget process, which began in October and is proposed to be completed in May, is diagrammed on this slide and the next. So on this slide, we, you see, we began the process in October. A number of internal things happened during that period. Preliminary estimate of revenues and expenditures were prepared in January. In February, the superintendent's proposed operating budget for fiscal year '25-'26 was presented to the school board. On March 5th, the school board will have a public hearing on the budget. On March 19th, this is the recommended date for the school board to approve the fiscal '25-'26 proposed operating budget. April 1st is the statutory deadline for the submission of the school board's proposed operating budget to be provided to Norfolk City Council. And Norfolk City Council will appropriate funding for the school board for fiscal year '25-'26 operating budget. The school board will then address any differences that may have been between your proposed operating budget and the appropriation that city council approved, and the school board is recommended to adopt the school board operating budget on, in, in May of this year. The total operating budget is $772.9 million. It's broken out between a number of funds. The general fund is our largest fund, that is our operating fund, and the proposed budget for the general fund is $450 million. School nutrition fund, which is primarily self-supported, self-supporting with federal money, is $26.9 million. All of our grants and special programs are in another fund, and that's at $42.8 million. And then our capital improvement budget for this year is proposed to be $253 million. We receive our revenue primarily from three sources. The state is the largest source of revenue, proposed for this budget at $263.3 million. The city's funding is the second-highest, proposed at $167.7 million. And then we also have federal revenue, other local revenue, and an estimated amount of reversion, so that's funds that we, that we didn't spend in fiscal year '24 that we proposed to ask the city council to allow us to use. That number is not yet final. It's very, 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 very close to being final, as we have drafted our financial statements. And then I'm going to go to compensation. Compensation is one of the primary priorities for this budget. For this budget, we are proposing to increase the starting, teacher starting pay from $57,500 to $60,088. That's a 4.5% increase. This increase includes both a one-step increase and a cost-of-living adjustment, and for those employees who are at the top of the scale, they would receive a one-time 2.2% bonus. We will, you know, Crystal, will you go to the next? Let's see. And, oh, okay. You are, you are at it, I'm sorry. In our proposed budget, instructional support is by far the largest portion of the budget proposed at $319.9 million. And to see the other categories, which include public transportation, facilities, operation and maintenance, technology, and administration, and attendance, and help make up the balance of the budget. And then we'll just look at the next steps. The, again, as I had been on a previous slide, the public hearing on the budget is scheduled for next Wednesday. On March 19th, we're recommending the school board adopt its budget. April 1 is the statutory deadline to get the proposed budget to the city so that in May, they can determine the amount that they are going to appropriate to the school board. The school board will then address any differences, and then the school board will be scheduled to adopt this budget. And with that, that's, just wanted to provide a quick summary and where we are and where we need, and our path forward, and with that, I will leave it with the school board chair. Thank you so much.
At this time, I'd like to ask board members if you have questions concerning the budget.
I'll just do one and then, because I'm sure there's a lot of questions. Ms. Spivey or Dr. Birdsong, have we, I know for me, when we talk about compensation, I would like to see what, where we sit in comparison with our neighbors, how we rank zero to five, six to 10, and 20-plus, 30-plus, as far as last year, and how that we surpassed, hopefully, our neighbors in compensation, and what does that look like for our neighboring?
That's a great question, and I can say that as it relates to our teacher salaries for this year, we were extremely competitive. Outside of Portsmouth Public Schools, we had the highest beginning teacher salary, and we were very pleased with that. In terms of the other districts, they were lower in that area than we were, and of course, because we typically end up presenting our budget first every year, then other school divisions are watching what we're doing so they can be as competitive or more competitive. And I don't know if Dr. Agnew Scott has with her, and I know she and her team looked closely at those salaries as we are preparing the budget, but I'm not sure if she brought that information with her today. Did you?
I don't know.
Okay, but we can certainly provide that to you.
Thank you.
Ms. Messine?
I think I'll just go around the room and ask people if they have questions.
Okay.
No, 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 you're good, no, you're good. She says she's going to go around the room, so you'll get to me.
All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity to have greater discussion around the budget. I do, I did submit several questions ahead of today's meeting, but there are a couple of areas that I'd like to focus on specifically related to our goals around literacy, achievement gaps, and providing access and opportunities to advanced coursework. And so with that, I'd like a little bit of an understanding around, first off, around, you know, when, during our progress monitoring, we've had updates from the administration around what's been working and not working, and tutoring seems to have been a high, high-leverage area for our students. And so could you, I see the $8.5 million in here for tutoring. Is that, is that all encompassing of everything that we need to ensure or to accelerate progress for all of our students, or if you could speak to that, that would be helpful?
Thank you. I'm happy to start, and then I'm going to ask our chief academic officer to join me at the podium. So as it relates to your questions, there were quite a few. There were five pages worth of questions, and we did our very best, and we were able to get those in this afternoon to you, so I think you should have in your email boxes the 12-page response to your questions. And so we're happy, we were happy to provide that information to you, but as it relates to your question right now, yes, so tutoring has proven to be effective, and we have invested a lot in tutors for our students, and we want to continue with that because it has worked well. There are other initiatives within our budget that will specifically address closing achievement gaps and achieving the goals of the school board. For example, professional development. At the end of the day, and I know I sound like a broken record here, but it is the classroom instruction that is going to make the most difference with our children, so we have to invest in our teachers. We have to invest in professional development opportunities for our new teachers, for our veteran teachers. Everyone could benefit from professional development. We have a very robust professional development program within Norfolk Public Schools, so much so that, you know, the saying around the region is that, you know, send them to Norfolk first, let them get that good professional development, and then we'll take them. And so I'll let Dr. Poehl talk a little bit more about some of the instructional initiatives that we had that will be supported by next year's budget. Dr. Poehl?
Sure. Thanks, Dr. Birdsong. And to start with the tutoring, the funding that was requested, absolutely, there's enough funding to cover where we've been, and our current needs are being met with local-funded tutors, as well as contract services tutors through university instructors, and we're finalizing an RFP process right now to reestablish contracts with tutoring companies. So budget-wise, what we requested was based on need and not, you know, it was based on what we need to accomplish for next year. And then, you know, as Dr. Birdsong was saying around the professional development and the other programs, you know, the continued focus with our early literacy and the professional development for our tutors included, as well as our teachers, around with the Virginia Literacy Act and the professional development required there, that's all been included in the budget, you know, the budget request that we had through academic affairs to support our teachers throughout the process, because that's a large lift for them. And then, you know, supplementary through our Title II and Title IV grants, we've also, you know, those applications have traditionally had different supports for teachers as well.
And could I ask a follow-up? So regarding the university instructors, so that contract that we have with them, is that inclusive of that $8.5 million, or is that separate?
That's part of the $8.5 million.
That's part of the $8.5, okay. All right, so that's within that, and then we still have the all-in?
We'll likely exhaust most of our all-in this year. So that's why, you know, last year, the tutoring was around $6 million on the local, and we're up to $8.5 million now, because we'll likely exhaust our all-in funding. But as, as in the past, we've discussed, when we have vacancies or other areas, we're able to use that funding for tutoring when possible to.
So the $8.5 million takes into account that the expiration of the all-in funding as well? Is that, okay.
Correct. And that includes our early literacy tutors, and just to, there was another question here I'll allude to as well, you know, we also have elementary school science teachers, we have middle, tutors, we have middle school science tutors, it includes those. We also have middle school reading and math tutors for the support blocks, it includes those. And this is our first year where we had specific sixth and ninth grade reading tutors as well, and that includes those in the budget, too.
Okay. So I guess the part that I want to better understand, so the $8.5 million, though, is less than what we've had for tutors. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Correct. And if you recall, in this year's budget, we added more local tutors, so we're hiring the tutors. That rate is much less than the university instructor rate. So we were able to get more bang for our buck, the more local tutors we were able to find. But coming out of COVID, we were able to find local tutors. But now we've been able to find more and more local tutors, so transferring more to us hiring the tutors ourselves is a cost-savings initiative.
Okay. Okay, and, okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand how the reduction in investment still enables us to do everything we need to do to accelerate.
That's how it is, because we've been able to find more local tutors, which is, it's much cheaper than using our contracted services with UI.
Okay. All right. I have some others, but I, let's let everybody go around.
First, yes, good afternoon. So I, the General Assembly just finished, and they just finished their session, probably come back in April for some reconvening. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but we received some additional funding from the state?
We haven't received that yet.
Of course not yet, but it's in the budget.
So when it's approved and it's appropriated, we usually come back in like May or June after something like that happens, and we develop a plan, we present it to the board, and you all decide if you want us to move forward with the plan, or if you want to make revisions or adjustments. So that's kind of an annual process. And thankfully, we're going to be in a position to add instead of having to take some things away as it stands right now, because we've had to do that, like years ago. We would have to come back to the table and make some major cuts, and so we don't think we're going to have to do that this year, so we're very hopeful about bringing some more recommendations to you when we actually secure how much they're going, the state is going to give us.
Got it, okay, awesome. That's my only question at this time.
Yes. Paulson?
Yes. We're spending some money on devices and all, does that include the infrastructure and other, some places, it's been reported that the signal's not that good inside the school buildings. Will this technology or device initiative, since it's a device initiative, it may not cover that, but is it covered somewhere else in improving the reception?
Yes, so Dr. Cataldo, if you can join me, we have a replacement cycle, for example, with our devices, and I've shared this before with the board, that there are, there are new members on the board who may not be aware of this. We have spent, invested millions and millions of dollars in Chromebooks and laptops, and unfortunately, some of our children have had six, seven, eight Chromebooks, and that becomes, and that's a little bit of an exaggeration, but there are some.
There are some.
There are some. There are too many. And so we find ourselves here every year with having to include additional funding to support that. We know it's very important, we want our children to have the tools that they need to be successful, definitely, but it is very, very expensive. And so I know in other school divisions, they are, when you lose a Chromebook, you crack a screen, whatever the case may be, you don't get another one until your parent pays for that repair or replacement device. And so we understand that some of our children live in poverty, we understand that, and we do everything that we can to make sure that we do issue another Chromebook or another device to our, to our children. So we're going to have to look at a way whereby we are able to, be able to at least collect something on these Chromebooks, because otherwise, we're going to be sitting at this table every year with millions and millions of dollars being invested in Chromebooks when we could certainly utilize funding in other areas. But to your question, as it relates to infrastructure, yes, we do continuously look at that, and I know that we did include some funding in the budget for that. If you want to address that, Dr. Cataldo, please.
Thank you, yes. Yeah, we did include money for the infrastructure, and in fact, if you look in the center of the room right there on the ceiling, right there, we have one of those devices in every single classroom and also spread throughout the buildings and the hallways. So if there is a principle, or if you're hearing information about a dead spot, or we're just not getting internet activity someplace, it'd be great if you sent me an email, and I'll work with our team, because we get replacements on those all the time. And many times, it's just really tweaking it, putting a new system in, but that's exactly what those things are designed for, to prevent that. And we do know, we have some of our older buildings that have very, very thick walls that it just will not go through from one classroom to the next. So what we do is we'll put multiple in a classroom. So when you walk in the classrooms, you look in the ceiling. So when you walk in the classrooms, you look in the ceilings and you'll see, especially in our older buildings, we'll have multiple units up there for that. So we do have that built into our infrastructure and to assist and ensure that students are able to connect anytime they need to connect from our devices.
Okay.
It's definitely built in there. So please reach out to me, though, if you are hearing a specific school, a specific classroom, because that's what we want to hear and we go out there and take care of it.
I suggest to parents that they talk with the principal.
Absolutely.
That's perfect, yeah.
Because that way, they're, they're, they're the ones that are gonna have to do that. And, you know, I can guide them to where they need to go.
Exactly. Yeah. That's perfect.
Colonel Paulson, just build us 50 new schools. We'll be, that'll solve that problem.
15 now, well. Thank you.
50, 5-0. 5-0.
Oh, 5-0.
Yes. No, 50.
I'll come back when my turn comes around.
Well, before, if it's okay with you, Alfred, I just have one question for them. All right, awesome. All right, so for the Chromebooks, were all students issued Chromebooks?
So yes, all students were, when we were going through the pandemic. In fact, I was very, very proud of what we were able to do in a very, very short period of time. We had a very, very strong one-to-one initiative. We, so every kid was issued a Chromebook. And so we are in a position now whereby, because so many children, for whatever reason, they have not returned their devices to us. And this causes issues with when children need their technology in classrooms or during times of testing and then they don't bring it back to school and then they can't participate in our, you know, our assessment program, SOL testing and things of that nature. So the principals wanted to shift to having classroom sets and allowing children who did not have devices at home to be able to check them out, as well as MiFi devices. So that's where we are now. But again, we still have more devices than children in the, in the school division. But that will continue to be a concern until we're able to address, you know, having our parents be a little more accountable for the devices that we are issuing to our kids.
So is, so we don't have a one-to-one right now? Like as far as kids being able to go home, have a Chromebook?
Mr. Dr. Cataldo, address that.
Yeah, we have, right now we have 28,007 Chromebooks and 6,049 iPads. So we have some of our younger students who use iPads, our older students use the Chromebooks. So we have more Chromebooks and iPads than we have students in this school division. So yes, we definitely are one-to-one.
So my question, my follow-up question is then, why did my daughter have to take a paper test this week as opposed to those students in another section of her class taking it on the Chromebooks because they said they didn't have enough?
I will follow up with your building principal to find out why your daughter didn't have a Chromebook.
I mean, it just, you know, I, I understand that we're supposed to be one-to-one, but I keep getting feedback that we don't have enough. I'm sorry, Ms. Thomas, I need to get in on that.
I was gonna say the same thing. There's not enough Chromebooks. I don't know where they are, if somebody got them hidden. But like the snow thing, a lot of kids actually went home with paper packets because they did not have a Chromebook. So we have a Chromebook issue, it's an issue. Like I said, I don't know if they hiding them somewhere or whatever. But I guess we'll have to get with the principal and see.
Do another assessment.
You know, do an inventory or whatever and see what we need. Because if we have that issue again, when we out for more than two days, the kids are not learning anything. So if that's between them learning and not having a Chromebook, we gotta get some.
And I did speak with a teacher who has 28, 29 students in a class, but 21 working Chromebooks. So that is.
How many do we have broken? Because I know you did an inventory of that, too.
We have 749 that are currently in repair.
So I have a follow-up. My question is, so we have enough, correct me if I'm wrong. So we have enough Chromebooks, then we have students, correct?
Correct.
And they are in operable working condition?
Correct.
Correct. But not every student, based on what, what my colleagues are saying, that they are not having a Chromebook. So there may be some reasons why.
There could be some other reasons why that we would have to definitely look into, talk with building principals.
Got it, okay.
Building principals work with their staff, work with their network engineer. That's the person who kind of counts them and monitors them. And they create, they let us know. So they let the division know how many that they have. And so we're able to access those numbers. And as they change in the school, they make the change in the school, reflects at the division level. So then we can see where it is and where the computers are being used. If how many are being broke, how many are broken, how many in repair, how many need to be fixed and how many we need to get additional. So we do move them from school to school sometimes if a school may have increased the number of students and maybe have less inventory. So we do move them around when needed.
Two more and then I'll be complete. Next question. So the parents, we know the children, for whatever reasons, they may damage the actual Chromebooks. Is, we want to work with our parents.
Absolutely.
And this is a shared responsibility and it's educational, this whole education excellence for our students. Is there an agreement in place for parents that if a device is broken, that there is some type of fee that they must pay?
Yes.
Yes.
That exists, but being able to enforce that is very challenging. And again, we don't want to penalize the children.
Oh, of course, by all means, yeah, you don't want to do that.
We have forms that have the cost of every single item, broken screen, damaged Chromebook, keys falling off, whatever.
And a charger.
Correct, all those things, it's all on the form. And so they know that when they are acknowledging that, that that comes with it.
Okay. How often are y'all conducting a technology audit on your devices that you have in your schools?
We actually do that routinely. And when we hear reports of schools maybe not having one or a parent letting us know, then we go into the schools and do that. But, but actually with the way the setup is, it's, we're always getting the information because it's at the school level. What's supposed to happen at the school level is when that changes, they update the FAM, which is, gives us the inventory information. They update that at their school and that transfers up to where we are. So we're able to monitor that.
Okay.
Can I say something, sorry, just?
No, you're good.
Just because we did just have an issue about this.
Yes.
Can we get in there and see where we at with our Chromebooks?
Oh, we will be, definitely, yes.
Okay.
Ms. Sheen had a follow-up question.
Yeah, may I enter? Yeah. So, so I think this is a, this is a great conversation, much-needed conversation because I think we have to understand the difference between having what we're calling one-to-one device. You know, does every, do we have more devices than we have students? But do the students actually have access to them? And, and then access to them to take home so that we're closing, you know, the homework gap, opportunity gap, but also when they are needed, because they're also using them in the classroom.
Correct.
So that's the other issue is that I know, you know, especially with this rollout with the weather, you know, it was my understanding that I heard from several schools that the rollout happened within the last few weeks where they were assigning Chromebooks to students. And so the program itself needs to be examined as to exactly how that one-to-one is working so that they have Chromebooks in the classroom when they need it for testing and other.
The district-wide.
Yeah, because we need it for testing.
Yes, we need to have a district-wide technology plan. That's a good, or a one-to-one initiative where it's truly not just, do we have 28,000 Chromebooks and we have 27,000 students? Yes, okay, you know, do the math. But do they actually have access to those Chromebooks when they need it? Not only at home, but in the classroom. And so that is what is needed because, you know, I think, I think we've all now, like, heard it from various schools that there is a disconnect there. So that needs to be addressed. And that, I too had a question about that with the, is this replacement cost going to?
Is it gonna cover?
Is it gonna cover what we need in the classroom as well as for the student when they go home?
Right.
So, so that needs to be, I'd like more clarification on that. But that was my follow-up question and thought for, around the Chromebooks. So I'll let you.
Are there any more questions from the board concerning this issue?
Yeah.
My last one. Have we ever considered a policy, and it may be already in place, that, that the family or parents, if somebody is responsible for this? And every case is different and I understand that. But is there a policy or do they sign something when they check out the, the Chromebook and take it home or the iPad, whichever? Do they sign something that, okay.
Yes.
And it explains to them what, what the, okay, thank you very much.
But we just have not enforced, like, financial repayments for cracked screens, missing Chromebooks, which is why several of our children have had multiple Chromebooks.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Awesome. My only, next question, to close it out, so we can get on with business. So you said there, there is usually a technology audit completed, correct?
We do audits throughout the year, yes.
Okay. And do you have, Dr. Birdsong, do we have access to that report to know?
If the board would like that report, we're happy to give them that.
Yes, I would definitely like that. I would like to see that report.
Yeah.
All right. Let's move on. Ms. Dr. Martin, do you have any questions on the budget outside of this category?
Yes. So last year I was talking about getting more students involved in extracurricular activities and there was recommendation that we expand our JV teams or university athletics. And so I was wondering if that was considered in this budget?
So to be quite honest, no, that, that did not come up in this budget as a priority. So no, it didn't come up as a priority in this budget because, again, we were peeling some things back. But again, we do have an opportunity with additional funding from the state to look at that. If that's something that the board would like us to do, we're happy to look at that.
I just, again, I just want to reemphasize, it's just very, there's research out there that shows that the more involved students are in their schools, the more opportunities that are open to them, the better they perform academically and socially. So that's why I'm raising that issue. So thank you.
And I'd like to follow up on that. We, we have a hard time in some sports fielding varsity teams at this point. So there are cer, like, we need to focus on varsity as much as we need to focus on expansion because there, there have been some sports where games get canceled because the team, the other team doesn't, simply doesn't have enough students playing on the team.
Yeah. We also have some varsity, I mean, we just need to, you know, build that equity into the system to make sure that both, that everybody has the opportunity as much as we can to get involved, be it varsity or JV. But last, the last conversation was focused on JVs, that's why I brought it up. Because I see some varsity benches that are full of students who aren't playing all season and it would be great if we could somehow give them that opportunity and also grow future athletes. We have a pretty good track record of doing that.
I do have a question about the four-by-four. It's listed as being cost-neutral. But there will be professional development going on for the counselors.
Absolutely.
So this is a little rambling, but it does tie together. So I do apologize, just stay with me. I see that we've allotted more than $10 million for security. But we don't have, we don't currently have this budget money towards social workers or expanding our psychologists. This is more of a statement than, I guess, than a question. I would like to see us make that, the students' mental health a focus. Should we get that extra money from the state? Because I understand we're, we're operating much leaner this year and we're doing the best that we can. So that, that is, that is not a question. But I do, I do worry that the counselors will be so focused on the four-by-four that we'll have even less availability of counselors to work with our students. And I, I do get reports of buildings where psychologists mainly focus on IEPs and 504s and do not have time to work with our students. And that is unsettling to me. So more, more of a statement than a question, but I just, I just wanted to say that.
And I'd like to respond to that. So for at least the last five years, and I can pull all of this data together for you, this administration has put a lot of supports in place for our children's mental health and social emotional learning. And of course, we're, we're not trying to take over the city of Norfolk's responsibility, you know, in terms of being social services. But we want to make sure that in order to educate our children, we know they have to be well. So we have included additional social work positions, social worker positions over the last few years. We've also put mental health social workers in our budget. We have different programs like Care Solus and Panorama in place. We have a psychologist internship program that we support through the budget. We've increased the number of psychologists in the budget. I know we still work with some therapeutic day treatment programs. So I, I just don't want you to feel like this administration hasn't focused on that.
I'm not saying that you haven't, but I just feel like we still need more.
We can use a lot of, more of a lot of things. But with limited funding, we have to make decisions about what the priorities are. And so certainly if the board wants us to cut something else out of the budget to hire more social workers, we're happy to do that.
Thank you. Let's go back, or, Ms. Moore?
Well, it was related to your.
Oh, if it's a follow-up.
Yeah, it's a, not a follow-up, but a follow-up statement. So exactly what you're suggesting is something that I have supported and have not felt that even though we have made some progress in terms of allocating resources toward mental health, it has, it has still been minimal in, in terms of the volume or the percentage that we spend on things like security, things that are more treating the symptom versus getting at the cause. And so, you know, for the last several years, I've advocated for additional social workers, school psychologists and completely support that. Even in my set of budget questions here, I'd like to see opportunities where we have dedicated social workers at each school versus them sharing multiple schools or school psychologists that are sharing multiple schools. Not only for that, but for our attendance technicians, which I know there's additional, the administration has added additional technicians as well. But what I hear frequently from them is that chronic absenteeism, as we all know, is highly complex and the, the issues that are keeping kids from school really require qualified individuals to understand what their needs are so that those needs can be addressed so that they can come to school versus something, it goes beyond what an attendance technician can, can do. Even though some, I know several of ours work tirelessly to get our students to school. But the, to address the needs of the student takes a very different type of qualification. And so I've advocated and continue to advocate for having social workers and school psychologists dedicated to schools to help our families and our students that need those, need additional supports. So another thing I want to share with the board around this very topic is that, around wraparound services, is that, you know, it's a question if, if maybe it's the resources are there, but a process maybe needs to be better known to the building administrators of how to get the supports for the students. So I'm not sure where the disconnect is there or if there is one truly. But if there is some way that we assess that type of situation, like are the, like maybe through the climate survey or through some other means to, to really understand, are they able to access the wraparound services that are available? Or what are the barriers? I'd like to know more about that.
Thank you. I support what she said. Yeah. I appreciate that. Let's, let's, let's move on to.
I have one more question.
On this topic?
Yes.
Absolutely.
So on the budget, just want to make sure, so I see there are several raises in the budget. I did receive communication regarding our bus drivers. Are they included in a budget increase?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Can you point to where that is for me?
Classified staff. It's on the, one of the slides that addresses classified staff at a 4.5% increase.
Okay.
And I think we have one of the hot, we, our bus drivers are the high.
We are.
Okay, good.
They are the highest.
All right.
This is the slide.
We all good, I think.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I don't know where everybody else is doing, but I, I think last year we were at the, yeah, we were at the top.
We were.
Okay, good, thank you for that. Just wanted to get clarification. Now, you hear one thing on the streets, but I Now, you hear one thing on the streets, but I'd like to hear it.
You're welcome.
Ms. DeCaligero?
Yes.
Can I ask a follow-up question around compensation? So are there any teacher groups or contracted teacher groups that are not included? I know we've heard from our NJROTC teachers, but in addition to that group, are there others that may be compensated differently? And is there any information that can be provided to the board to see how they compare to other districts in that regard? No. Can you answer that?
The RTC?
And JRTC teachers.
Yeah, JRTC.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So within the 12-page document that I provided, that response is included?
Okay. Well, yeah, okay. I did not get a chance to go through that. And in light of that, could you... Could we agree to post my questions as well as the responses? Because I did hear that from several of you that some of the questions I posed were shared. Yeah, were shared amongst the board as well. So...
Our board received the document.
Oh, it did? Okay. Okay. I have not seen that yet. Okay.
Okay. Let's start with Dr. Martin. Other questions?
Oh, no. I thought we moved on to...
I am.
Where... Ms. Moore.
Oh, Ms. Moore.
I don't have another question right now.
Other areas of concern?
Well, my...
Or questions?
I'm looking at the answers to the questions that we had around the budget. And mine was around graduation rate and how the review of our open campus and how is it meeting the needs of the students and how we can capitalize on that in targeting students and getting them back on track. And I know part of the question was transportation may be a barrier for some students getting to open campus. So I was just wondering. But I see I have an answer here. So... I see one for the summer school, but I don't see it specifically to open campus conduct a review of the program. And see if it's... If it's... I know originally, I can't remember some years ago when we launched that program, but is it continuing to... Students catching up, getting their credits and getting on track? I guess that's what my question is.
So an official formal review of that has not been done. And so that would certainly need to be done. But I could say from just qualitative feedback from building principals, they appreciate having the program. And when they believe they have students that would benefit from placement there, they are taking advantage of that. Yes. Absolutely.
Ms. Basine, other areas of concern?
In the... Does anyone else have any other questions? Or is that... Is this the only topic? This is the only topic for our workshop, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just... I'm looking through the email that you sent to all of us, Dr. Birdsong, regarding the JRTC teachers. And of course, board member Basine, please provide an explanation to why they do not qualify. And if that is still the case and the results of the analysis was done to determine if they're competitiveness with other districts. I don't... I'm trying to find a response that you put. Where's that response at?
It could be in red. It's not there.
It's the third...
Attached. I think there's three attached.
Oh, okay.
Go to the third one.
Okay.
All right.
Dr. Agnew Scott, for time's sake, would you mind approaching the podium so you could provide some context?
Thank y'all for your responsiveness. Greatly appreciated. Ah, okay. There we go. There's the third one.
Good afternoon. So to summarize, our NJROTC teachers are compensated a bit differently than other teachers. They actually are compensated by way of half of the Navy and also the other half. We compensate, Norfolk Public Schools compensates the other half of their salary. The MIP, as it's called, is dictated by the Navy, which includes a cost of living increase. And so that is communicated to our office. At that time, as I stated before, half of it is compensated by Norfolk Public Schools, the other half by the Navy. Instead of the teachers being placed on the salary scale, since the salary... The salaries on the teacher's salary scale is not equivalent to what is being compensated or what is being dictated by the Navy. They are placed off step. So that's essentially how... Why they're being placed off step rather than on the teacher's salary because their salary is dictated by the Navy.
And some from your research...
Are they receiving more money next year than they received this year?
Absolutely.
They are. We receive quarterly compensation quotes from the Navy. And as I stated, it does include a cost of living increase in that. So we've already received a quarterly increase for those individuals at this time.
But they never get to move up a step or get basically promoted?
They do, but it's in a different way just so we can keep track of how many years they've been with Norfolk Public Schools. They're placed on the side, and then they keep moving up just so that we can keep track of how many years they've been with the school division, but not necessarily for compensation purposes.
May I ask a follow-up? Sorry. I yield to you.
Uh-uh. Go ahead. Go ahead.
So based on your response... So in surrounding districts, in the majority of them, I think with the exception of one other, they are placed on the teacher's scale.
It's actually the opposite. There are approximately...
Chesapeake are placed on the teacher's scale. Newport News is on the teacher's scale. Virginia Beach is on the teacher's scale. And just Hampton, public schools are not on the teacher's scale.
So it's about half and half. So for Chesapeake, the instructors actually receive a stipend to whichever is the difference between what is on the salary scale and what is dictated by the Navy, by the military. They get a stipend for that difference between the two.
Okay.
But they're not necessarily on the scale.
Okay. So what is our competitiveness with other districts then? I mean, I see the explanation of what other districts are doing, but where in the analysis can you show us our competitiveness with other districts? Or that might be something you have to come back to us with, but...
We would have to come back with that as well as their compensation in comparison to their counterparts.
Okay.
So I have a follow-up. This is so... So I'm just reading off of the responses from the superintendent, from Dr. Bassam. So going through those... Okay, so a lot of our cities, as we know, a lot of our teachers and instructors are leaving Norfolk Public Schools and going to other adjoining jurisdictions because they pay more and probably less stress. Let's just re-reel. Let's address the elephant in the room. However, so since RTC, we pay half, the federal government pays half, have we done an analysis to see if we were to give them a pay increase, how much that would cost and how it's included in this budget? Have we done that, Dr. Birdsong or Dr. Agnew?
That information... As a matter of fact, I am planning to meet with the NJROTC teacher, teachers, to discuss all of that. So we're in the process of preparing all of those analyses so that we can share with them what our findings are. So at... Once that is prepared, then of course, you know, you will be able to see that information as well.
All right. Okay.
I have something to suggest on that. Are we prepared to add them to teachers' compensation? Is there a way that they can see that they're actually being paid their worth? Because this man seems very sincere when he comes and he really feels like he's not being paid where he should be paid. So is there a way you kind of ease their minds? Kind of, you know, show them something?
Of course.
More than what they're seeing?
Of course. And that's the purpose of the meeting, so that they can see in terms of compensation and something that's a little bit more concrete so they can see exactly where they are in comparison.
And this is going to be new for our new board colleagues, but we've previously talked... Over the last few years, we've done a compensation study. And I know it's been said that we have made those that were impacted by the compression hole. Could you share a little bit more about how... What you've done to, I guess, confirm that and to ensure that we have done that? And has there been any analysis done to, I guess, to verify that we have truly addressed that issue? And the second part of it is going to be around the one-to-one, you know, years of experience to the salary scale that the board has, you know, talked about in previous years and has encouraged just to kind of figure out, how do we put that policy in place and what that would cost? If you could share a little bit about that? I see a brief response to that. But if you can expand on that, that'd be helpful.
Sure. So the first question that you had was in regard to... Remind me. I'm sorry.
The first question was in response to, well, the one-to-one, but the how we know, like what analysis you've done to ensure that those that were impacted by the step compression have been made whole, like for those who are still with us?
So as you know, there was a plan that was put in place that was, I think, four years ago, three years ago. And so the plan was followed as directed. And for each year, there was a step that was taken to increase, you know, to address the compression that existed. By the third year, which now it's complete, everyone has been made whole. Everyone has received notification of that. There was written notification to each individual that was impacted. So that communication was received by anyone impacted. And we have not received any communication from any staff indicating that they were not made whole.
All right. And then about the one-to-one policy, years of experience to step?
Yes.
What are the... So I see that there are some barriers here to that. And if you could speak to that?
Okay, sure. One of the largest barriers is the fact that with this type of work, it would require... It would require someone within HR to go through and do an analysis of each and every employee's file to see how many years that they've been in the division, to determine what, you know, the compensation amount would be to get them to a one-to-one status. And unfortunately, we don't have the staff available to be able to do that file-by-file review for every single employee within Norfolk Public Schools. So, you know, the feasibility of, you know, doing something of that magnitude is not there.
But moving... If we were to move forward with that salary scale, what would it take to move forward with that? The one-to-one? Especially with new hires and... So what would it take, I guess? What would be needed to do that?
It would just be just a change in our processes and procedures and, of course, an analysis of how much that, you know, would cost. We would have to determine that as well. From this point forward, that would be a completely different process than to go back and do a review of everything in the past.
And I think that's... That is what the board had previously asked for, is like moving forward, what is the cost of putting that in place? And so I was expecting to see something come back to us, you know, related to tying into this budget around that. So if you have any information on what that would cost, I'd like to know what that is because this has been an ongoing discussion for several years now. So I'd like to continue to advocate for that and ask for that.
Doctor? I have a question. From the DOD's point of view, are they considered instructors or teachers? And there's a slight difference. But I was just wondering how the DOD... I think there's a contract that you all have with them.
There is. They're referred to as instructors. We often refer to them as teachers because they are...
Yeah. I was just wondering, like, because some of the military looks at individuals as instructors and is really not teachers.
Correct.
But these are young children, you know. But I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Mr. Inge?
Yeah. So just the follow-up question. You may not have it. I mean, come back to us with the information. For our JRTC, NRJRTC personnel, do you know, like, where they fall? What are we looking at? Like, are they... Are we noted they're former military? Do they have master's degree, bachelor's? I'm curious because I'm looking on the website and can see how much they're making. If we're paying half of it, I'm just trying to understand the logic of not giving them an increase.
It varies by individual, but they are compensated based on what type... What level of degree that they have. So they are eligible for educational stipends, which they do receive. If they have a master's degree, they are compensated at that same level.
Got it. Okay. Thank you so much for that. Last question, I promise. May not be the last question, but for now. So can we come back with the information on all of NJRTC personnel working in the city of Norfolk and see where they compare to other teachers' salary? And then also create a actual document that shows if we were to approve giving them an increase, because that is our role and responsibility, if we were to do that, what would it cost the taxpayers of the city of Norfolk to do? Is that something both Dr. Birdsong and you can do?
Yes, it is.
All right. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Same line of reasoning?
No.
Okay. I'm like sure. Other... I'll get to you, Tanya. I just want to make sure. Other questions about other aspects of the budget?
Well, other aspects of the budget?
Right. But I just want to make sure everybody has a chance.
I just want to respond to Mr. Inge's comment because the instructors have a completely different role really than teachers. So I don't see how we could compare the two. I mean, tell me if I'm wrong, but the...
They do teach classes.
They teach, but they don't have the same responsibilities. So I don't see how that is a fair comparison.
They have more.
They might argue they have more.
Yeah.
I mean, they're like... When you have a trouble with a student, a lot of times if they're playing a sport, you go to the coach. They get pulled on in many different ways other than just being a teacher in a classroom. I know from my time teaching at Maury High School that they were much more than simply a teacher. So I think they need to be compensated at least as well as the teachers that are in the building.
There may not be teachers, but I definitely say it's a pay parity in making sure that they are being paid fairly in equity for the services that they're doing and contributing to our school. So just...
Well said.
Yeah.
I think they should get what they should get, but I'm just not... I just don't see it as a parallel at all.
Are you, for example, and Dr. Agnew Scott, I know for some of our instructors at Norfolk Technical Center, they're on a different scale than teachers. Are they on the same scale now? The instructors at Norfolk Technical Center?
I think they're on the same scale.
Okay. I would just check that just based on this question right now because I recall that at one time it was separate just because the qualifications were somewhat different and there was a need to seek...
And there, there was a need to seek, um, individuals who had expertise in a certain area. Maybe they didn't have a degree or things of that nature, which kind of differentiated the instructor from the, um, from the teacher. And I'm not saying that's the case with NJRTC, I, I just don't know. So that would be interesting to know. But I also believe, please correct me if I'm wrong, there's a stipend associated with the position, just based upon the, the additional duties. I think it's like $2,100 or so. Okay.
For, um, them having an extended day.
Okay.
Mr. Paulson.
I was, hope I didn't come off negatively when I asked the question about the difference between a teacher and an instructor. They have a skill and a, a background that not many people have.
That's right.
They're very specialized in, in naval warfare, et cetera, you know, so, thank you. I, I didn't want to give the wrong impression. I was just trying to see what, when we address them, what, what should we address them? And it goes either way in, in our setting, so thank you.
Ms. Masine, you had a different question?
Yes, um, so on that, um, I do want to advocate and discuss around, um, the Ignite program and potentially expanding that to include additional schools. I know, I think this is the third, this will be the third year of its implementation, if I'm not mistaken, for at Lindenwood. And, um, I know there's a recommendation to add an ELC at Southside STEM Academy. However, you know, looking at the data, um, around teacher vacancies and the percentage of associate teachers in some of our other buildings, how might we prioritize expanding the Ignite program, which is additional pay for teachers in those schools, such as at J Cox, um, J Cox Elementary, PB, well, right now, the numbers, the top numbers are J Cox, Chesterfield, Berkeley, Campustella. You know, so looking at the, using the data to drive the next set of schools that would potentially benefit from the Ignite program. I'd like to see us put some, um, effort around that, because it does seem to be having a positive impact at Lindenwood. Not just in terms of teacher turnover, but in terms of academic performance, which is our ultimate goal. So I would like to see that. And if, in addition to that, for those schools that do have a high percentage of associate teachers, I'd like to see dedicated instructional coaches at those schools. Because I have received some feedback, um, you know, from the print, from the building level, that having instructional coaches that are shared amongst multiple schools can be challenging when you have a high number of strong, but, you know, associate teachers who are learning to be teachers. So I'd like to see, um, some instructional coaching, uh, coaches added, um, at those schools or that are dedicated to those schools to support, uh, the teacher, the associate teacher program at those schools. Um, so those are just some additional thoughts I have. But of course, you know, I have lots of questions around special education. You can, I'll look at the responses that were given, um, on that and, um, come back to you with any additional thoughts and questions.
Do we have the number on what the state is in the budget? Hasn't been approved by the governor, I understand, um, of what we will be getting in additional support staff?
No.
From the mental, well, just, just so, so it's noted, 5.8 million, 5,830,000, 590 dollars for the city of Norfolk. If the budget is approved as it is, the Senate and the House both approved it. And it goes to the governor that would fund an additional 96 positions for support staff. That includes social workers, custodians, and food service staff. So if that money is approved and we do get those funds, um, just, I would definitely like for us to come back to the table to ensure that we chart a course forward, to make sure we get those people taken care of.
And something you may not be aware of is that we have to fund SOQ positions and non-SOQ positions, which we take responsibility for. So while there may be additional funding, uh, these positions may not be funded through the SOQ, which means the locality has to take care of that, which is why there's always, every year advocacy around increasing, um, the positions within the SOQ. So while they say one thing, it, it ends up meaning something else.
Totally understandable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're definitely open to doing whatever we need to do to support instruction.
Good. That's what I saw, I'm looking to hear, is that if we do receive funding and it has to go somewhere else, I understand other priorities, but we want to make sure we take care of our support staff and addressing getting those people inside of our public schools.
Always.
Always. Thank you, Dr. Burzong.
Thank you. Anything else from the board? No. At this time, I'd like to, uh, for someone to make a motion to move us into closed session.
Make a motion to move us in closed session.
Second?
No, I'm, uh, I'll make a motion to amend, uh, motion.
To amend what?
The motion to, uh, go into closed session. As it's, as it's written, I want amended.
Okay.
All right.
Make your motion.
Hey, the motion is to amend the motion to enter a closed session and delete the reference, uh, to the Educational Facilities Planning Steering Committee. That committee is not a committee of the board. It's not a school board committee, nor an advisory committee. This was formed by the, uh, administration. And I believe that the members are, who are volunteers, do not fall under our purview. So I don't know why we're gonna, um, select something that is not pertinent to a correction, that is not in the board's jurisdiction. That's my basis for the motion.
Colonel Paulson, may I ask this? If your motion is voted down, are you going to participate in the closed session? Got portion that will cover that discussion?
Oh, yes.
And will you then, at the end of the closed session, refuse to certify it?
No. No, if, if we discuss it, I can't say we didn't discuss it.
No, the certification asks you to certify that everything in the closed session was lawfully appropriate for the closed session and lawfully discussed. If you are saying that you feel that a subject in the motion cannot be discussed in the closed session and you then participate in it, then I don't see how you can certify that the closed session was lawfully conducted. That's why I'm asking you a question.
Well, I would, hadn't thought about that, thank you.
And I guess my point is to the board that it may be, if Mr. Paulson feels that, whether he participates or not, at the end of the closed session, he is going to have to refuse to certify, meaning that he will take the position that a subject that's illegally discussed in the closed session, that it might be best to follow his motion and delete that. And either, and either discuss it publicly tonight or at some other date, or give your legal team time to research his issue and give you a formal opinion as to whether that can be discussed in closed session without violating the Freedom of Information Act.
If you were to, uh, reveal it, uh, then I could, we could participate and move on.
Well, I mean, I cannot do it now, that would take several hours.
Yeah.
But, uh, what I'm saying is discretion may be the better part of valor. It may be best for the board, rather than simply trying to vote, to overturn this motion and go forward to postpone the discussion in private session today of this matter, to give us time to give you a formal, legal, written opinion as to whether we feel that Dr. Paulson is correct and that this matter that could only be discussed in the open session.
What if the motion is not seconded? Even if the motion is not seconded?
I, I'm sorry.
I'm saying, I'm asking if the motion is not seconded, you're still, uh.
I'm saying if the motion's not seconded, then you would go in and discuss this. But Mr. Paulson would, as a matter of logic and law, at the end of the, when it's time to certify it, he would say, I cannot certify this session because you have illegally discussed a subject in violation of FOIA. So you would have a vote at the end that is six to one, one more member saying that you violated the law, six presumably saying you did not. That invites a lawsuit from the public. And rather than risk a lawsuit from the public that you might lead, I'm suggesting that we might postpone this discussion and give us time. And if, and if going forward in the future, we decide, you know, we advise you that we think you can legally discuss it, then, you know, Dr. Paulson, uh, excuse me, Colonel Paulson may still object, but we will be prepared to defend you in court if somebody sues you for violating FOIA.
And, let me ask a clarifying, so, and if we postpone this discussion, we're postponing the establishment of this committee, obviously, right?
Uh, yes.
Which is already delayed.
I mean, you, you don't have to postpone, you could discuss it publicly.
Yeah.
Alternatively, you could, uh, not provide the, as to the choices. Either to the members of this, which I think, if I understand your allegation correctly, does not really a board committee.
That's correct.
But otherwise, what I'm saying is that if, if you, if you vote on his motion and overrule it, then he will inevitably refuse to certify the meeting at the end of the night. And you're inviting a lawsuit for violating the Freedom of Information Act. And it, I think a wiser provision would be to postpone it for now, so your attorneys can give you an opinion as to whether or not we violate. Now, it's still possible, Colonel Paulson may reject our opinion and still feel that, make the same motion again. But if we give you a legal opinion that we think that will not violate FOIA, then you will have some degree of safety. You will at least feel that in the end, uh, if we go forward and Mr. Paulson or Colonel Paulson, uh, refuses to certify and a member of the public chooses to sue you of whether or not you violated FOIA by discussing this matter in a closed session, you will be better positioned to defend yourselves in court. Because a FOIA suit comes on fairly quickly. The statute requires that it be brought forward once it's filed fairly quickly. So that, that is my advice with regard to this. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions, any further questions.
I, I guess. How is it, um, so it's, it's, you're correct, it's not an advisory committee, but it is a committee that the board has typically been involved in. So I guess I'm trying to.
When have we been involved in this type of committee? I don't re- I don't recall a time.
Have we had this type of committee before?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
I've been on it.
I've been on one too.
Yep. And we have, uh, to ensure that there's geographic.
So the attorney's never heard of this committee before?
Advisory committees, but not for administrative committees.
This isn't the same one that I've been placing, like the facilities committee for the school.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is.
But we need to move forward on.
Yes, we need to move forward. I'm hearing that our best course of action is to remove this from the closed, uh, session agenda and have our, uh, law team, um, give us guidance.
But I like to set a timeline around it, just because we're.
Already delayed.
We're already delayed. This was supposed to have begun.
We could have a closed session to the March 5th meeting.
I mean, since we've never, this has never been done before.
Let's get the legality.
Has not been done before with an administrative committee. It has only been done with our advisory committees. Those are board committees.
All right, so let's, so do we need a motion to move, remove it from the closed session agenda?
Uh, I think, I mean, Dr. Paulson has made the motion.
He made the motion, someone just needs to second his.
Somebody could second it and we'll just delete that subject from this motion and it won't be discussed at today's closed session.
And part of the motion would be to be discussed at the next opportunity.
Well, they're, they're going to come back with an opinion, legal opinion.
Postpone for possible discussion, because we may come back and tell you that, that, you know, after looking at it, we, uh, you know, have to agree with Dr. Martin. The other possibility that we can look at, which, uh, Dr. Martin's comments make, is, is there something preventing the board from creating this as an advisory committee? That then is, you know, just like any other advisory committee.
Right, just because it's a long-range facilities, educational planning committee.
I didn't think she said that.
No, I.
No, she didn't say that.
I didn't say that. I'm saying there's, that, um, the precedent has been that with these types of committees, they're administrative and then the administration reports to us. The only time that we have done a, um, more thorough examination of the members of committees has been, um, with our advisory committees.
Well, and what I'm saying is that one possibility, if we conclude that Dr. Paulson is right and you cannot discuss this in a closed session, because it's not advisory committee, why not, the, the possibility would be to recreate it as an advisory committee and where you certainly can.
Yeah, and I.
Consider in closed session candidates for that committee.
Who idea was it to have this committee?
And I had inquired about this a few months ago when we first did the press release and it was shared with me that we would be doing this review as the same way as we would an advisory committee. So that's why it was my expectation that we were going to do, uh, just that. And we haven't had very many task force or, uh, steering committees, other than this one where the board had been involved with, but it's been, we've had the same group that came preceded your coming onto the board. So I don't know that you've been involved in that, but we have had that before.
I've been on the board for six years.
Yeah, and we've had a steering committee, which we haven't had, we haven't had one in the last four years, at least, since pre-COVID.
Prior to 2015.
Yeah, well, pre-COVID, um, the steering committee has not gotten together, so.
Why are you against? Why are you against?
Excuse me.
Mr. Paulson?
Right. Dr. Burzong.
No, please, the board and then I'll.
I'm, I'm, uh, speaking in, in the fact that we are trying to, uh, if we wanted to create this committee, we would have voted on it. We haven't voted on it, so it doesn't belong to us. We have not put it in our, um, co- our, our, um, policy, either under the BCE code or the BCF code. It appears nowhere in our policy or anywhere, even in the minutes. I think that we have voted on this. And that's why I think it belongs to the originator and not to the board for any discussion or, or anything. It's their decision, they just started it, they own it. That's it, that's my.
We, we own it.
No, we own it.
We own it. There's no they own it.
Right. We're the school board of the city of Norfolk, yeah.
Well, the school, the, not the school, well, or the school system owns it. And, but the administration of it does not belong to this entity.
Well, Chairman, uh, I suggest to, um, move in the air of caution. So I, if, if Mr., uh, Colonel Paulson can, uh, restate his motion, his amendment to, to the original motion, I would like to hear that and then we can proceed as.
Ms. Thomas had a comment.
Ms. Thomas, did you have a comment?
No, uh-uh.
Okay, um.
Yeah, please.
You have it, okay.
Please read what he said.
I've re-stated as the.
So amend the closed executive session and remove Section C, um, discussion of candidates for possible appointment to the Educational Facilities Planning Steering Committee.
Until.
Until further notice, or until.
Uh, legal opinion has been rendered.
It's not removing, I may have misheard, it's not removing Section C of the motion. It's not removing Section C of the motion. It's removing the last few words of Section A. That refers to discussion of candidates for possible appointment to that committee.
But it wouldn't be part of C because that's...
No, it'd be...
No, I don't think C references that.
So it's A.
The way, if you, Ms. Tanner, if you look at the way that it's worded, I'm just eliminating the portion that says, "The discussion of the specific personnel as needed in conjunctions with subsection C." That should remain because we are doing subsection C.
So just that section there.
It's Section A, the last...
The last sentence, discussion of specific personnel as needed in connection with subjects identified in subsection.
The word "motion" would be a period and then that last part deleted. Is that correct, Colonel Paulson?
That is the motion.
Okay. To amend the closed executive session, to rule the discussion of specific personnel as needed in connection with subjects identified in subsection C of A of this motion. Period. Right, Jack?
Yes.
Then I will second that.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion needed on this motion?
That's it.
All right, Ms. Tanner, will you please call the roll?
Sure. Basine?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Inge?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Calagiro?
We'll get something to log with the idea that if our opinion is that a candidate...
She didn't call with...
Oh, didn't I say Thomas? Oh, I miss you. Yeah, I said Inge. I'm sorry, Thomas. What say you?
I use me.
Oh, I miss you.
We're in closed session? Business meeting to order. Ms. Tanner, will you please take the roll?
Basine?
Here.
Buffalo?
Here.
Inge?
Present.
Martin?
Present.
Paulson?
Present.
Thomas?
Here.
Calagiro?
Here.
Let's move on to our stock to number 5.03, the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand? Section 5.04, adoption of the, of the school board business meeting agenda. A vote is required, Ms. Tanner.
Is there a motion to accept?
Is there a motion to accept or adopt the business meeting agenda?
I move that we approve the meeting agenda as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Basine?
Tanner will take the...
Aye.
Sorry.
Yes.
Basine?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Inge?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Calagiro?
Aye.
Section 5.05, School Board Clerk's Report.
Chairwoman Calagiro, I would like to acknowledge several recognitions for the month of February, starting with Virginia School Board Association's School Board Appreciation Month, as we celebrate our school board's dedicated commitment to education and serving Norfolk students, parents, staff, and the community. Board members, would you please make your way to the blue backdrop as Dr. Burzong and I will present a certificate from the VSBA to commemorate School Board Appreciation Month. And we also have a special token of appreciation from our talented art students here in Norfolk Public Schools.
Paulson, you can come on the other end with Kayla. Okay, Dr. Burzong. Oh, I'm gonna get you to help me.
That's right.
Our first person we're recognizing is Chairwoman Sarah Calagiro. Come forward. Put your hands together. It's not graduation time yet, but... Next, our vice chair, Alfreda Thomas.
Oh, you're getting graduation shots, okay.
Next, Ms. Basine, Tanya Basine. Next, Tiffany Moore Buffalo. Next, we have Jason Inge. Welcome aboard, sworn in today. Thank you for your future service. Next, we have Dr. Adele Martin. And last but certainly not least, Colonel Ken Paulson. And next, we have our beloved student representatives. First, we have Kayla Green Ortiz, our school board representative, followed by Carson Rice, our other school board student representative. Give them all a round of applause. Now, the moment you've all been waiting for. Our talented students in Norfolk Public Schools, they commissioned some artwork for each one of you. So the first one goes to Chairwoman Calagiro. And you gotta, look, you gotta do show and tell, so you gotta show your piece of art. There you go. Next, Ms. Thomas. Come on, Ms. Thomas. Yeah, huh, that's hers. The sticker must have fell off.
Oh, yeah, that is beautiful.
You have to pose for the camera. We have some very talented students in Norfolk Public Schools. Very talented. Next, we have Ms. Basine. Next, we have Tiffany Moore Buffalo. I'm glad you're happy with your presence so far. Good. Next, we have Jason Inge.
Oh, interesting.
What we got here?
Yeah, look at that.
Awesome, thank you. Shout out to Jordan Patterson.
Oh, yes, we have to read the children's names. Okay. We'll come, okay. Okay, next, we have Dr. Martin.
This by Sam Rogue.
Rogue, looks like Sam Rogue.
Thank you.
And Mr. Post, Colonel Paulson. By the water.
This is cool.
Yes, it is.
Yes. So I guess real quick, we want you to say who your artwork is by. Come forward, sir, or you can say it.
Morgan Harrison.
And the school.
And the school.
Academy of International Studies.
I was, I couldn't figure it out. I am sorry to say that.
It's okay.
Ms. Thomas, who has your artwork?
Okay, here we are. It's just like being in a classroom, some names you can't pronounce. Help me out, superintendent.
This Leah. Danielson, this Leah Danielson, Maury High School, ninth grade.
Yes, yes.
Yes, good job.
Very nice.
All right, Ms. Buffalo.
I have...
Oh, we just moved on.
Jaleah Leary. Thank you.
Maury High School.
Maury High School.
That's, um, all right, Dr. Martin.
I have Sam Rogue, Maury High School, ninth grader, and the title is "United Connections."
Oh.
Nice.
Okay. Okay, she's starting to something.
So I have artwork from our artist here at Norfolk Public Schools, Jordan Patterson, Helen from Northside Middle School, and the title is "Old Donut."
Oh. All right, Ms. Basine.
I have artwork from, sorry, Cameron Ricks from Blair Middle School, eighth grader, titled "United Through African American Things."
Oh, wow. I like that.
And I have from Aaron Schilling from Booker T., 11th grade. It's called "Deep Sky."
Wow.
Yeah, the deep sky.
Let's give our students a round of applause. Very, very talented students in Norfolk Public Schools. I'm gonna let y'all get it, well, no, hold on. We're gonna recognize our student representatives. You all come forward. The board members got you a sweet treat. And a gift card to Chick-fil-A.
Thank you.
Five guys, okay. And flowers. We want to continue to see you blossom and bloom. Just give them a round of applause. And about the Burzong, you can jump in the picture and then we're...
Now have everyone squeeze in a little more. All right, one, two, three. And one, two, three. Excellent.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Okay, you all may be seated. Thank you. You know what? I'm just trying to make you all have exercise today. I need y'all to come back. I need y'all to come back.
Come back.
Everybody. And line back up again. Because we need you to please remain standing as we segue to recognize our former school board member, Mr. Rodney Jordan, who was here with us tonight, who served dedicatedly, had dedicated service in Norfolk Public Schools for over 12 years on the school board. And Mr. Jordan, please come forward to the podium to be recognized on this side as Chairwoman Calagiro reads your proclamation as Basine holds it.
Proclamation by the School Board of the City of Norfolk in honor of Mr. Rodney Jordan. Whereas the City of Norfolk, the City of Norfolk City School Board and the Norfolk Public Schools community honor Mr. Rodney Jordan, who sought and received appointment to the Norfolk School Board in 2012 and was elected twice in 2016 and 2020 to improve outcomes for all NPS students. All, meaning all. And whereas Mr. Jordan was a significant contributor with other school board members and community stakeholders in creating the tagline, the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community. And during his tenure, the number of accredited schools increased by 150% and the number of public school choice options for Norfolk students. And whereas during Mr. Jordan's tenure as chair, the school board adopted the School Board Accountability Plan with a focus on academic excellence, passed an equity policy, hired the division's first full-time woman superintendent, Dr. Melinda Boone, established a student representative to the school board, and led the creation of revenue sharing, of a revenue sharing funding formula with the city council. And whereas Mr. Jordan served as the lead advocate for student outcomes, student outcomes-focused governance, and earned the VSBA Distinction Award for 10 consecutive years and presented around the country advocating for public education and effective school board governance. And whereas Mr. Jordan served 12 and one-half years on the Norfolk City Virginia School Board from 2012 to 2024, board chair 2015 to 2018, vice chair 2020 to 2021. And in 2019 to 2020, Mr. Jordan served as the 2020 Virginia School Board Association President and also served as the co-chair for the VSBA Task Force on Student in Schools in Challenging Environments from 2014 to 2024, among other positions at the state and regional levels. And he was a founding member of the Consortium of State School Board Association, Urban Boards Alliance Advisors, and also served as an executive committee member for the Council of Great City Schools Board of Directors. Whereas Mr. Jordan was the 2020 recipient of the Benjamin Elia Elijah May's Lifetime Achievement Award from the Council of Urban Boards of Education and the 2020 inaugural recipient of the Mary Peak Excellence in Education Equity Award from the Virginia Department of Education. In 2015, he was recognized by the Virginia School Board Association as an inaugural education Advocate of the Year, an award created to identify board members who have demonstrated significant and outstanding leadership, commitment, and contribution to public education that has had an impact on their region and the Commonwealth and who have shown active involvement in local, state, and federal advocacy on behalf of their division. Whereas the Norfolk City School Board gratefully acknowledged his dedicated career to serving our schools and the greater Norfolk Public Schools community as he is also the proud father of two NPS graduates. And now, therefore be it resolved... Well, it does say Wednesday, February 19th, but I'm gonna take some license to say Wednesday, February 26th that the School Board of the City of Norfolk hereby honors the service and contributions of Mr. Rodney Jordan to Norfolk Public Schools and society as a whole.
Oh, just to the school board that's behind me. No, I just appreciate and thank you for, for the recognition. I have my older daughter Paige and her husband Tariq and my grandson Josiah with me. I was sitting there thinking, I think the last time I was on this side, Paige may have been Josiah's, Josiah's age. But I just wanted to, you know, again, say thank you. I, you know, I started off as an appointed school board member. My father passed in 2019. If he was here today, it's a little awkward for me, he would say, you know, "Why are you going down there? You're doing what you're supposed to do and your job is to make things better than you found it and you don't get recognized for that. That's just the calling and service that you're supposed to provide to the, to the community." And so that's what my goal was and to try to make sure that, that the students would have things better than I have it and, and that hopefully we will continue that type of progress moving forward so that one day Josiah would be able to come before you and walk the stage and do the things like his mother and his father did. Also just mentioned, your security guard, Harold Wilson, is married to my cousin Crystal. I told him I was gonna get him fired, married to my cousin Crystal and, and she, she is a, has been a Teacher of the Year over in Portsmouth, as has been her, her sister. Josiah's grandmother is, works for Norfolk Public Schools. He has two or three cousins that work for Norfolk Public Schools. His grandmother, my ex-wife, past wife, worked in Norfolk Public Schools for several years and taught pre-K. And so this, this focus on literacy and student outcomes isn't something that I brought to the table, it's something that I was, I was raised with. So to my colleagues that I had the opportunity to serve with, I appreciate having the opportunity to serve with you, Dr. Burzong, all of the, all of the staff here. And just going back to my grandson for, for a moment, because I wanted him to come. I messed up his schedule because I just wanted to be a reminder of why we're all here. And so the school system exists to improve outcomes for young people, youngsters like him, his parents, my daughter is, my older daughter, I have another daughter's in Texas, but my older daughter there, she's a certified, get that right, certified behavior specialist, registered behavior specialist. Her husband works for the, for the city. And so they may not, if I had messed up their schedule, about 7:30, he would be in the bath, ready to read a book. And so I just wanted them to come also because as a reminder that a lot of families like theirs, they won't be able to come to the microphone. They're gonna be home taking care of their children, doing the things that we ask for parents to do to be engaged at home. But they count and they matter just as much as anyone that comes to the microphone. And so I just wanted them... And so I just wanted them to remind the board of that, that you have an awesome responsibility. You represent the vision and values of the community. And that includes those that are able to come to the mic and those that don't. Those that live in Ward 7, those that live in Ward 6, doesn't matter what your zip code is, you're representing all of their potential futures. And they need for you to be focused enough to compete for whatever options that Josiah may have. Because there's some people in the city that would suggest that there's some private options he should pursue. I think he should pursue a public option. But it needs to be a public option that's gonna be focused on his growth and his outcomes. So, thank you.
We'd like to get a group shot.
Come on in here, Rod.
Yes, Olin Mills. Awesome. Thank you very much, Mr. Jordan, for allowing us to recognize you on this evening. Oh, that's right. He said cheese. Oh, he is too cute.
I'd like to ask the school board members and Dr. Birdsong to remain at the step and repeat. And I'm waiting for Mr. Inge. Hope he did not have trouble procuring the item. Were you able to get it?
Oh, I thought y'all were still taking a picture with Rod.
Those are beautiful.
Whereas school board clerks in each locality throughout our great Commonwealth, actually, please come up here.
Come on down, Karen. Price is Right.
Come on down. Come up here, stand next to me. Whereas the school board clerks in each locality throughout our great Commonwealth are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities. And whereas school board clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of the school board, a record of all receipts and disbursements and a record of all official acts. And whereas school board clerks perform such other duties in connection with the school business of her city as maybe required by the school board. And whereas school board clerks maintain frequent contact with the public, including parents, employees, and the media on behalf of the school board and superintendent. And whereas school board clerks in the performance of their duties are often required to work extra hours attending school board meetings. And whereas school board clerks join with school boards to help ensure that students achieve to their highest potential. And whereas school board clerks provide an invaluable service for the school board members and superintendents, the V S B A Board of Directors does hereby recognize the third week of February, or the fourth, as School Board Clerks Appreciation Week in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And whereas the Norfolk School Board joins the V S B A Board of Directors does hereby recognize February last week, February 26th, as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week in the Commonwealth of Virginia.
Oh, wow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Open this when you're in private because you might cry.
Oh, okay. I feel like I need to go like this.
Let's get a picture.
Let's get the flowers out for a second. Oh, those are beautiful. Thank you, guys.
Come on in the middle.
We really love you.
They're very heavy. I just didn't want to.
All right, one, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect.
I'd like to thank my parents. Madam Chair, I have one more recognition.
Get my steps in today. Yes.
Next, I'd like to share that many schools around the district participated in Black History Month activities. And to close out this month-long celebration, we have a special Black History Month presentation from one of our students who will read an original poem inspired by a painting, Al Amistad, as a celebration of Black History Month. Jennifer Lopez, Senior Coordinator of History and Social Science, will introduce our student performer.
Good evening, Chair DeCalagero, Vice Chair Thomas, School Board, Dr. Birdsong, and guests. My name is Jennifer Lopez. I am the Senior Coordinator of History and Social Science for Norfolk Public Schools. And I have the distinct pleasure of introducing our student performer for the month of February. Across the division, students and staff have celebrated Black History Month as an essential part of our ongoing commitment to equity and excellence for all students. Throughout history, countless individuals have fought against injustice and oppression, shaping the course of freedom and equality. One such moment occurred in 1839 when enslaved Africans aboard the Spanish ship La Amistad revolted against their captors in a desperate fight for freedom. After the U.S. Navy seized the ship, their case reached the Supreme Court, where with the support of abolitionists, including former President John Quincy Adams, they won their freedom. This landmark victory became a powerful symbol of resistance against injustice. Taking inspiration from historical artwork and firsthand accounts of the enslaved Africans taken aboard La Amistad, AP African-American students at Maury High School created original poems to demonstrate their understanding of the event. I would be remiss without acknowledging the hard work of their teacher, Mr. Christopher Alvarado Lopez, for his creativity in developing this meaningful task for his students. With that, I am pleased to introduce Maury High School Senior Lincoln Sama. Lincoln plans to attend college in the fall and major in computer science while continuing with ROTC and track and field. Without further ado, please enjoy Lincoln's reading of his original work, Freedom at Last.
Dark, cold, and wet all over. Whaling and screaming sound closer. Stacked on each other, crowded, no space. Away from our homeland to an unknown place. For days, we've waited, trapped below, in hell's deep grip with no hope to show. One day, one day, our chains will part, but freedom comes with life torn apart. At last, at last, we men gain courage strong, the courage to ride against this brutal wrong. In search of hope, we stand our ground. We rise with hope and no longer bound. Freedom at last, a chance of hope for me, and the 34 survivors fought to be free. Free? Not quite free, as we are captured again by the same man. The man who stole my dignity and culture, the man who mutilated my brothers and sisters, the man who sees us as objects. Yet, years later, we are free once again. But not where we once thought we'd create new life. We are free in our homeland, out of control, able to live the life we want. We are free in our homeland with stories untold, giving all children the life they deserve. One day, that day, our chains release, the revolt a win, and our souls at peace.
Madam Chair, that's it for my recognitions.
Let's move on to Agenda Item 5.06, the Superintendent's Report.
That's gonna be hard to follow. That was excellent. That was excellent. Let's give the chairman another round of applause. So this evening, we do have a video for you that, again, demonstrates all of the wonderful things that we are able to do as it relates to teaching and learning in Norfolk Public Schools. We had a celebration of Coleman Place Elementary School celebrating 100 years, and we're very, very excited about that. You will see that in the video. You also see our children at, or our young people at NTC, who built, I believe it was nine shelters, and we were very, very proud of that accomplishment. There are other things in the video that you're gonna be in awe of our students. So without further ado, Karen, please roll the video.
Coleman Place Elementary celebrated a century of teaching and learning with former teachers, staff, and students during a special event. Guests were invited to peruse through old photos and yearbooks commemorating the lengthy history of the school and enjoy a program featuring speakers and outstanding student performances. Throughout its 100 years of existence, Coleman Place has experienced everything from a move to a brand-new building to a visit from the President of the United States. And grateful students and staff alike return to remember.
I had the honor of introducing former President Clinton.
And introduce to others the President of this great nation, President Bill Clinton.
It was absolutely amazing, a wonderful experience. Honestly, I feel better now because I was like, this happened in 99, so I was feeling a little bit old. But to know that Coleman Place is 100 is making me feel a little bit better about my age.
Students from Norfolk Technical Center's Carpentry Program utilized their skills in a unique partnership.
About six months ago, Betsy McAllister with the National Institute of Aerospace contacted us about building the weather shelters that we're currently installing.
These students installed nine shelters at various schools in Hampton with the goal of installing more throughout Hampton Roads.
We haven't really installed anything like this before, so it's good experience to have. And there's also like the mixing concrete and everything. It's just like building on and expanding upon like skills that we already have. So we're like more well-versed in it.
I enjoyed it a lot, actually. I am very hands-on. I love working with my hands ever since I was a little baby. And I would always touch a lot of things and grab a lot of things and combine stuff.
Mr. Crawford's students are amazing. The last couple of times that I've interacted with them, you know, installing these shelters, they're engaged, they're knowledgeable. They're great, great kids. And the future for them is gonna be very, very bright.
Families enjoy the evening of fun and learning as Mary Calca Elementary held their Math and Literacy Night. Stations were set up around the school as students and parents participated in problem-solving activities, math games, and reading bingo.
It's pretty great. It actually lets us parents who work a lot get to see our child's excitement, their excitement for learning, to be around other people, to show us what they've been learning throughout the school year. It's pretty awesome. I like it.
I think it's important to have families come and be in the school and enjoy certain things with their children. We're also giving parents tips on how to help their kids at home, sending them home with books and, you know, reading things like, these are the things you can do with your kindergartner. This is how we work on phonics. So I think it's important to get people in here so we can get those messages out to them.
Across the division, schools are creatively and enthusiastically expressing the importance of being present, on time, and ready to learn each day, proving that attendance counts at Norfolk Public Schools. This friendly competition underscores a vital message. When students miss school, they miss out. Chronic absenteeism, missing 10% or more of school days for any reason, has a significant impact on learning. We want to thank Crossroads School for being able to pivot during the recent unexpected snow days in late January. The Dolphins cruised the NPS's attendance flag on over to the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood and still carried out their Spirit Week that week as well. Crossroads, you make us NPS proud. From ADL to Little Creek Elementary School, the Attendance Challenge is popping with much more in store. As part of the School-to-School Attendance Challenge, NPS recognizes the schools that are leading the way in combating chronic absenteeism. Congratulations to the following schools for having the best attendance and for earning the most improved attendance for the month of December.
Congratulations to the Norview Marksmanship Team for placing first and second at the Area 5 Air Rifle Championship and qualifying two teams to compete in. The NGROTC Air Rifle Championship in Anniston, Alabama, on February 17th and 18th.
Across the nation, the first Wednesday in February is National Signing Day. And NPS had a couple schools with ceremonies to mark the occasion. Lake Taylor High had two football players sign to play at the next level, while at Maury, nine student athletes signed. Two from the football team, four from the baseball team, and one each from the track, field hockey, and volleyball teams. It was a dream come true for most, even if the event came with some nerves.
My main thing was like, don't stutter. I just didn't want to stutter. I was kinda like shivery and stuff like shaky, but...
I worked for this day since I was a freshman, you know? I've been thinking about going to D1 my whole life, so it feels amazing to put pen and paper.
To see where all our student athletes signed, check out Channel 47 or our social media outlets.
Gramby High School teacher Seko Varner spends his days helping special education students learn algebra and his free time working on a new version of a 90-year-old idea.
Well, the Hampton Roads Green Book is a website and an app, and it's available in the Apple Store. It's available in the Android Store. And it spotlights Hampton Roads' black-owned businesses. It also highlights veteran-owned, women-owned, and other minority-owned businesses. The original Negro Motors Green Book was developed in 1930s by Hugo Green, who was from New York, and his wife, who was from Richmond, Virginia. And what it did is it was a repository of safe spaces where those who were considered Negro could go and not face terrorism. If they go on the app, they're gonna find events, they're gonna find articles. But primarily, you're gonna find a listing of different businesses, organizations, and professionals that can provide services or help to you here in the Hampton Roads area.
In addition to his teaching duties, he's also the faculty sponsor of Gramby's Black Student Union, where he had the opportunity to show students his app and tell them how it relates to the original Green Book.
The great thing is, I saw heads nodding. I saw them saying yes. They downloaded the app. I never thought that teenagers would love it as well and see the relevance and see that there's some uses for them. And to see so many of the students download it was great.
It helps out our community. It teaches young people that we can build something from the past and build it up in the present and the future. It could help so many people. I know people who want to feed into black businesses and just women business. This would be an amazing platform to use.
Another round of Rockstar Awards went out. Administrators visited schools throughout the division to present outstanding teachers with Rockstar Awards. This award recognizes exceptional teachers for excellent attendance or reaching at least 95% student participation on their Star Literacy Assessments. Both teachers and their students were surprised and grateful for the recognition.
I'm so excited. I'm surprised. This is amazing. And I love my school, so to be recognized is great. Teachers work really hard, and it's very important that we're here because the students need us. And it's great that the district recognizes how valuable we are and what it means for teachers to show up every day.
It's really an honor. I didn't know I was getting that. I just started teaching at Norfolk Public Schools. Well, you can't teach if you're... Well, you can't teach if you're not here, you can't learn if you're not here, so that's our fundamental prerequisite for academic success, is you've got to show up. That's your first thing.
Congratulations to Ingleside Elementary Pre-Kindergarten Teachers. They were recognized by the Virginia Department of Education for successfully meeting the Virginia Quality Expectations for Early Childhood Programs 2324 school year. Kudos to them for a job well done.
Norfolk Public Schools invited students, parents, and the community to Maury High School to update them on the design of the new building. After a presentation that revealed renderings of what the school and campus will look like, guests met with members of the design team to share their questions and comments.
So we all met back in June when we first started the design process for the new Maury High School. We got lots of feedback, lots of input, and so what we're here tonight is to update the community and get more feedback. The design has progressed a lot since that last meeting, and so we were able to share a snapshot in time about where we're at and hopefully get some constructive feedback to mold where we're going.
Attendees were excited to learn about the progress of the plans and what the future may hold for this outstanding learning institution.
I think it was a good event. Lot of pros, maybe a few cons about it, but I think it's what the city needs. It was quite a learning experience to know exactly what's going to happen to the school. By the time the school get built, I won't have kids that go here, but I'll still be a resident of Norfolk.
I thought the event had really good layout. I appreciated the walkthrough, the presentation beforehand, and the individual conversation. I also appreciate how responsive the architect team was. I had some really detailed questions, and they were here to be able to talk about them.
I love like how they do like the athletic building and the sports. I really like how it's like a big campus and it's like actually like really like modern and still incorporating like the older stuff, too.
Oh, I like it. I like the plans because we have to move forward with technology. I like that it's going to be open spaces, natural lighting, and artificial lighting together. I think it's going to be a good thing for the community and more opportunities for the students.
Congratulations to Granby High School junior Megan Theebarge for winning the region 5B Dive Championships for the second year in a row, and congratulations to Maury High School Girls Swim Team for winning 5B Regionals. Keep making NPS proud.
For complete video stories and more division-wide information about Norfolk Public Schools, visit the NPS website and check out our YouTube channel, Facebook page, Instagram app, and the NPS newsletter.
Chair DeCaligero, that concludes my video report.
Move on to Agenda Item 5.07, Citizens Comments. Ms. Tanner?
For today's Citizens Comments, we have two speakers. Today's speaker signed up for Citizens Comments before the start of today's meeting. When your name is called, please come forward to the speaker's podium, state your name and whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools, or if you are employed by the district, and state your agenda or agenda items. One person is to speak at a time. If you are representing a group, state the group's name. You may ask your group members to stand in place to be recognized. Speaking time is limited to three minutes. A timer is set with an alarm that will signify the end of your speaking time. State your position and give relevant facts or data. Avoid saying anything that identifies students or personnel information about individual employees. Personnel, disciplinary, and confidential matters may be addressed to the school board directly via email at schoolboard@npsk12.com. Comments should be addressed to the board and not addressed to an individual member. School board members do not respond to public comments at the time they are given. Any written statements or supporting materials should be given to the clerk. Chair DeCaligero, our first speaker for today is... Tremaine Spruill, followed by Precious Hayes.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Let me fix this. Good afternoon. How are y'all doing today?
Doing good.
My name is Tremaine Spruill. I'm a student at Booker T. Washington High School, junior. So I just want to start by apologizing because quite frankly, I feel as if I shouldn't have to stand here right now, so I don't think that I should have to explain why students deserve answers and why an innocent teacher was removed without transparency, or why the core program at Booker T. Washington High School is suffering because of it. But since no one in power has taken responsibility or given us the respect of an honest conversation, then speak I shall. Every statement I make comes with all due respect, but with also deep disappointment in how the situation has been handled. Mr. Ziegler is not just a teacher. He is a mentor, he's a leader, and at the heart of our core program, under his guidance, we were not just another school, we were a force to be reckoned with. He gave us opportunities, pushed us to excellence, and put in the kind of effort that many teachers just don't. He sacrificed his time, his energy, and personal resources to ensure that we had a thriving program. But what makes this situation even worse is that Mr. Ziegler wasn't just an exceptional teacher. He was a support system for so many students in and outside of the choir class. He mentored us beyond music, he checked in our well-being, and he created an environment where students felt valued and heard. And in return for this, his dedication, he was thrown away with no explanation. His sudden removal was not only unjust, it was downright disgraceful. Students were blindsided, there was no communication, no reasoning given, and no effort made to explain this decision to the people it impacted the most, us. Instead, we were left in the dark, forced to navigate rumors and conflicting statements while our choir fell completely apart. It is still insulting to think that the voices of the students, the very people affected by this, were completely ignored in the decision-making process. And let's be real, this wasn't just a minor change. You removed the person who built this program up from the ground, the person responsible for Booker T. Washington High School's recent choir success. His absence has already caused disruptions, instability, and a decline in the overall morale of the students who were once proud to be a part of this choir, and how do you justify that? So let's talk about the emotional academic impact that this has had on us. Students who once found comfort and inspiration in that choir room now feel abandoned. The structure and stability Mr. Ziegler provided is gone. We've been left scrambling without a leader and without even the common courtesy of an explanation. And let's not forget numbers because thank God, they don't lie. Since Mr. Ziegler's removal, our choir has lost over 60% of its members, and do you honestly think that that is a coincidence? Students left because they knew what this program was with them and what it would become without him.
Thank you, Mr. Spruill. Your time is up.
It has been 280 long days, and I won't be long. It has been 280 long, boring, and unproductive days in that choir room since Mr. Ziegler has been removed. That's 280 days of lost opportunities, that's 280 days of competitions, programs, everything, gone in just 280 days. In 280 days, you all have...
Mr. Spruill, I'm sorry, you have exceeded your time.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Also, one last thing. I have complaint letters here, so I will give them to Ms. Tanner. Yes, ma'am. And I will, thank you, I appreciate my time. All right, you all have a nice evening. God bless.
You as well.
Thank you.
I just asked y'all to give me some grace. It took a lot to come here. I'm a retired veteran, and I'm like struggling with some anxiety just sitting in here. So I might exceed the three minutes, but I gave you enough evidence to where I don't have to say anything. But it's been a year since my son was violated by ROTC instructor. And as a retired Navy veteran, it's hard to digest and sit here and wait for some kind of resolution without being angry or being misinterpreted, because I have really had to learn a new language just to express the frustration. I know I'm off the letter, but I've been trying to express myself for over a year, and I've been unheard. My son was assaulted by ROTC instructor, and I'm a retired chief, and it's a lot of stuff that they didn't told me that is unsaid. And... I'm not trying to ruin your Black History Month, but my son, the instructor told me, he wasn't even his teacher, and he said, "I need you to do better." And I've been eating that since January 18th, 2024. I don't know how much better I need to be. I'm a single mother. Both of my kids, well, this one that was assaulted, he was doing very well. Now he is a chronic absentee. He don't want to go to school. And that's in my letter. It's a lot of, I'm still consuming the poetry. I'm a poet, so I'm not trying to get off topic. I see I got a minute, but I really had to express that to you and look in your face and say, "I'm tired of asking for help." My son, I don't want him to be lost in this system. He asks for help. He told the truth in his statement. I haven't got any answer. He was, they did a whole investigation and haven't given me anything. Like, there's so much supporting documentation in there, I don't have to stand here and tell you anything, but I just ask you for your grace and your mercy, and if you believe in God, to do the right thing by my son and the rest of these children, because he wasn't the only child in ROTC in Norview High School for 2023-2024 school year. And I thank you for your time, and I thank you for listening, and have a good night.
And that completes our speakers for this evening.
Sure, report member has one. I'll take one, just to make sure all the board members have it, though. Move on to Agenda Item 5.08, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I've moved that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Ms. Moore has motioned to approve the consent agenda, and Dr. Martin has seconded that motion. Ms. Tanner, will you please take the role?
Basine?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Inge?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
DeCaligero?
Aye. We'll move on to Agenda Item 7.01, the monthly financial report. Ms. Spivey?
Good evening, Chair DeCaligero, Vice Chair Thomas, school board members, and Dr. Bergsong. Tonight, we are presenting the January financial statement. The January report covers seven months for the fiscal year that started July 1 of 2024. This report reflects July through January transactions that were recorded on or before February 14th. As shown on the financial highlights page in the top section, the general fund collections for the first seven months totaled $273.7 million and represent 58.6% of the general fund budget. Collections during the same period in the previous two years ranged between 52.6% and 53.2%. As with prior years, collections are based on cash collected during the period. As shown on the next to the last line, by the end of January, we spent or encumbered $268.1 million, or 57.4% of the budget. During the two previous years, spending through December 31st ranged between 48% and 52.6%. As shown on the bottom line of this summary, actual revenue collections are $5.6 million above expenditures and encumbrances. More detailed information on this summary follows in the following pages. And during the month, there were no general fund transfers exceeding $50,000. And Chair DeCaligero, that's the end of my prepared comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Board members, any questions?
Yes.
Ms. Basine?
Yes. Thank you for the report. If we could go back to, could you remind me, I know I've asked about this before, but the inter-fund transfers that are under athletics, what is that particularly attributed to?
It's, those are movement of funds between our athletics department and the school athletic programs, and they're labeled in transfers. So there's a movement of those funds throughout the years as the athletic activities are performed. So that is what's in that line, and you can notice over the course of the year, it will go positive because there's some reimbursement from one to the other, and then may swing back negative in a different month.
Okay. And then, under student, I appreciate that, under student health and wellness, the purchase services, I noticed, was also, seemed to exceed what was budgeted. What is that attributed to? And I was curious if there was something that we needed to look forward to in the future budget to accommodate that?
There are. The primary drivers of those expenditures are our contracted psychologists, because we're having to use more contracts due to not having the people, and that's more expensive. It is also Care Solus and Panorama and the Student Handbook make up the bulk of those expenditures that you're seeing.
Okay.
And those overages are being addressed in the future budget.
Okay. And I was going to ask that question, but could you expand on, so we've had to contract for psychologists because we haven't been able to fill the positions, or we didn't allocate the positions?
Keeping them filled.
Keeping them filled.
And the hours that they're having to work has caused us to need to use more contract.
Okay. And how are you determining what the need will be for future budgeting purposes?
Working with the chief on where those needs are.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'll ask, I have a couple other questions, I'll ask that offline.
Are there questions from the board?
I do have one question.
Ms. Tanner?
So, Ms. Spivey, you had said that there were no transactions above $50,000. Is there a guidance or something if it's less than $50,000?
Yes, there is. If we move funds that have been budgeted for one particular area to a different area, we, without, we can do, the staff, the departments can move funds under $50,000. Any movement of funds over $50,000 can be moved, but there is a requirement to report that to the board.
And where's, and Dr. Bergsong, maybe where would I get that report if it's less than 49,999?
We, that information, you can...
I'm not sure I understand your question.
For any transactions that are...
Okay. I'll get with Dr. Bergsong and instructor to get it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I do have one additional question. Could you share with us what the current fund balance is for this school year?
What the current fund balance?
Like where we are?
Well, the most accurate way I can show you that is, as shown on this report, that our revenues over expenditures and encumbrances are the $5.6 million.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Paulson? Any question? All right. We need to take a vote.
I've moved that we approve the monthly financial report, subject to audit.
One second. Second. Ms. Moore has moved that we accept the monthly financial audit, and Dr. Martin has seconded that. Ms. Tanner, will you please take the vote?
Basine?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Inge?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Thomas?
DeCaligero?
Aye. We'll move on to Agenda Item 8.01, School Board Business Meeting. Adjournment. The school board business meeting is adjourned. Thank you. I am sure.